And welcome to the Cedar Falls Regular City Council Meeting this April 16, 2018. Now I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask for a roll call from Madam Clerk, please.
Miller?
Here.
DeBoer?
Here.
Bruce?
Here.
Blanford?
Here.
Dara?
Here.
Whelan?
Here.
Green?
Here.
All members present, Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Item C is their motion to approve the minutes of the regular meeting April 2nd.
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Motion second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. I do have a few items up here, a couple of things to read and a couple of things to announce. First is a proclamation, whereas Cedar Falls has a Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee whose mission is to improve the quality of life in Cedar Falls through increased opportunity for safe walking and bicycling as viable means of transportation and physical activity. And whereas Cedar Falls has been designated as bike-friendly community, is a complete streets community, and has adopted City of Cedar Falls Bicycle Plan. And the City of Cedar Falls in cooperation with surrounding Cedar Valley communities maintains a magnificent trail system. And whereas Cedar Valley Cyclists is an active part of our growing community of bicycle enthusiasts. And whereas the League of American Bicyclists have designated the month of May as National Bicycle Month. Now therefore, I, Jim Brown, Mayor of the City of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim May 2018 as Bike Month, May 9th as Bike to School Day, May 14 through 18 as Bike to Work Week, May 16th as Ride a Day of Silence, May 18th as Bike to Work Day. Sign this 16th day of April 2018. See our friend Roger Wright as ready to accept and say a few words.
Thank you very much, Mayor Brown. From the Cedar Falls Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee, we appreciate the recognition and the declaration or proclamation of May as Bike Month. On the screen, it didn't come out as big as we were hoping it, but we have a little poster that we're spreading around town to list the events that you just read in your proclamation, including the Ride of Silence, which is Wednesday of the week, and that will meet at the Grassy Spot on 4th and Main here in Cedar Falls about 6:15. And people are willing or able to ride, who are able to ride will have a fairly short ride, about eight, eight and a half miles, and it goes fairly slow, so it's friendly for those who are not accomplished or serious bikers. And everybody's welcome. In addition to that, before we get to May, we have another trails event coming up this Saturday. It's the Annual Trails Cleanup Day. And since I have a minute on the mic, I want to put a pitch in for the trails cleanup. We have three locations in Cedar Falls that people will be gathering to clean the trails. One is at Gateway Park, just downtown. One is at Pfeiffer Park on Grand Boulevard, and the third is at Prairie Lakes out in the southern part of town. There will be a crew chief at each location. Bags are provided. We'll be doing it between 9:00 and noon, so please come and help clean up the trails and thank you for your recognition of bicycling in our great city.
Thank you, Roger. Appreciate it. Up next is a proclamation in honor of St. Patrick Catholic School for its designation as a Leader in Me Lighthouse School. It reads, "Whereas the City of Cedar Falls is extremely proud to be the home of St. Patrick Catholic School, which has educated young people from Cedar Falls and surrounding communities for over 125 years. And whereas the Leader in Me Initiative teaches leadership and life skills to students and creates a culture of student empowerment based on the idea that every child can be a leader. Whereas St. Patrick's Catholic School has earned the distinction of being certified as a lighthouse school for exemplary implementation and integration of leadership, culture, and academic principles based on the seven habits of highly effective people. And whereas only nine schools in Iowa and 375 schools in the world have received this prestigious designation. And whereas to commemorate this honor, St. Patrick Catholic School will hold an arts and leadership showcase on Tuesday, April 17." Now therefore, I, Jim Brown, Mayor of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim April 17 as St. Patrick Catholic School Celebration Day and encourage our citizens to join with me in honoring the school for reaching the lighthouse milestone. Sign this 16th day of April, 2018. I'm not sure I saw anyone formally from St. Patrick. Oh my gosh, I do now. Welcome. You want to say a few words as far as lighthouse school is concerned? Just give us maybe your first name?
I'm Molly.
Move the mic.
I'm Gianna.
I'm Molly.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Brown.
Can you pull the mic down again? It didn't stay.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, for having us here today and honoring our Leader in Me Lighthouse Milestone. As a lighthouse school, we are expected to shine a light for other Cedar Valley schools and to guide them in developing leaders in the community.
We are honored to be chosen for this status and plan to continue our growth in the Leader in Me program. St. Patrick Catholic School will be hosting a fine arts and leadership showcase to exemplify our students' abilities and leadership. We invite all of you to join us at St. Patrick's School, 615 Washington Street, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. tomorrow at April 17. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna and Molly. Really appreciate you coming. And good job in front of all these people. I do have somewhat of a third proclamation. It will be brief, not because it lacks importance, and it's quite the opposite. It's a proclamation for our administrative professionals. They play an essential role in coordinating much of the city. And whereas Administrative Professionals Week is observed annually in workplaces around the world to recognize the important contributions of administrative support staff. And whereas the City of Cedar Falls recognizes the diverse work and talents of the various administrative support staff in all departments of our city. And whereas these administrative support staff may have differing titles, they all serve an important role in the City of Cedar Falls. Now therefore, I, Mayor of the City of Cedar Falls, do hereby proclaim April 23rd through the 27th as Administrative Professionals Week, and specifically April 25th as Administrative Professionals Day in Cedar Falls. So just again, to our great staff and administrative staff, thank you for all you do. Lastly, I have a special set aside at this time. Tonight in the audience, and you can maybe hold your applause, we have a few sectors of the Cedar Falls High School Athletics who have won a state championship through last year or this year. I'd like to recognize the 2017 Girls' Varsity Volleyball Team, state champions, and their coach, Matt Johnson. If you could stand at this moment, can we be recognized, please? Can you be recognized? And Denny arranged for all this because we had some parents here with cameras, so you've got a few seconds there. Awesome. Thank you. Congratulations again. Next is the 2018 Boys' Varsity Basketball State Champions and their coach, Ryan Schultz. A few fellows would come up, get a picture, and take some applause, I'm sure, please. Again, thank you, folks. Really appreciate you being here. Congratulations. Did I see Dylan Moffett here? Is Dylan here? I don't see him. He was a state swimming champion for the state of Iowa and his coach, Mr. Hagensek. And last but not least, well, these guys are going to have to file out here. Then we'll pick on your athletic director.
Abandon ship.
I did want to point out to the folks here and for those watching, we do have, unfortunately, retiring athletic director Gary Koenig, but he is also the Iowa Athletic Director of the Year. If we can acknowledge, Denny's got you on camera there, Gary. Thank you. Thank you, everybody, for indulging there. What a great group of young people. And old, I guess. Item D is agenda revisions. Any revisions, Madam Clerk?
I have no agenda revisions, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item E is a special order of business. E1 is a public hearing on the proposed plans for the 2018 permeable alley project. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any written objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no objections. I'm filed, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Before we open for public oral comments, I believe John Ressler is here to give us a little bit of information on the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, members of council. So the project is another permeable alley construction project. It is between Franklin Street and Tremont Street, from 15th Street to 16th Street. Of course, the purpose of our permeable alley project is to improve the conditions of our alleys, but also to help more stormwater infiltrate into the ground and reduce runoff to improve our water quality for Dry Run Creek. The estimated cost for this project is $73,036.75. It is less of a cost than the projects we did last year, and that's mainly because there were some additional storm sewer work with the projects last year that we didn't have to do this year. It was just something convenient to do while that area was torn up for that work, so that's why you see the reduction in cost. Just some quick background, we have about 150 alleys in the community. Over the last four years, we have done 13 alleys. This is number 14. So we have a ways to go, but so far, so good, and we'll just take one bite at a time and work our way towards 150. So we try to do anywhere from one to three a year. Based on budgets this year, we're just doing the one.
Thank you, John. I will open up for public comments on this public hearing. Hearing seen, none, I declare the hearing closed. Item two is a resolution approving and adopting the plans for the 2018 permeable alley project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussion or questions from council? Requires roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item three is a public hearing on the proposed plans for the Campus Street Box Culvert Project. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Any objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no written objections. I'm filed, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Once again, John, you're up for a few words with this public hearing, correct?
Thank you, yes. Thank you once again. So this project is the removal of the existing bridge structure at that location and replacing it with a double-cell precast reinforced concrete box culvert. There will be some creek channel excavation, some erosion control measures, and reconstruction of some portions of the city street and the area. So we've worked with the university on this as well. There's potentially some conflicts with students moving in and out, so we've worked that out, and we're all set to go. Estimated cost for this is $356,032.70.
Thank you for that. Now open up for public comment. Hearing seen, none, declare the hearing closed. Item four is a resolution approving and adopting the plans for the Campus Street Box Culvert Project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item five is a public hearing on a proposed vacation and dedication of utility easements on lots 33 and 34 of Pinnacle Prairie Business Center North. Is there a motion to receive and file the proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any written objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no written objections. I'm filed, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Before we open for public oral comments, I believe John Ressler is here to give us a little bit of information on the public hearing.
Thank you, Mayor Brown, members of council. So the project is another permeable alley construction project. It is between Franklin Street and Tremont Street, from 15th Street to 16th Street. Of course, the purpose of our permeable alley project is to improve the conditions of our alleys, but also to help more stormwater infiltrate into the ground and reduce runoff to improve our water quality for Dry Run Creek. The estimated cost for this project is $73,036.75. It is less of a cost than the projects we did last year, and that's mainly because there were some additional storm sewer work with the projects last year that we didn't have to do this year. It was just something convenient to do while that area was torn up for that work, so that's why you see the reduction in cost. Just some quick background, we have about 150 alleys in the community. Over the last four years, we have done 13 alleys. This is number 14. So we have a ways to go, but so far, so good, and we'll just take one bite at a time and work our way towards 150. So we try to do anywhere from one to three a year. Based on budgets this year, we're just doing the one.
Thank you, John. I will open up for public comments on this public hearing. Hearing seen, none, declare the hearing closed. Item two is a resolution approving and adopting the plans for the 2018 permeable alley project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item three is a public hearing on the proposed plans for the Campus Street Box Culvert Project. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item three is a public hearing on the proposed plans for the Campus Street Box Culvert Project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion or questions from council? Requires roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item three is a public hearing on the proposed plans for the Campus Street Box Culvert Project. Is there a motion to receive and file proof of publication?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Any objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no written objections. I'm filed, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. Once again, John, you're up for a few words with this public hearing, correct?
Thank you, yes. Thank you once again. So this project is the removal of the existing bridge structure at that location and replacing it with a double-cell precast reinforced concrete box culvert. There will be some creek channel excavation, some erosion control measures, and reconstruction of some portions of the city street and the area. So we've worked with the university on this as well. There's potentially some conflicts with students moving in and out, so we've worked that out, and we're all set to go. Estimated cost for this is $356,032.70.
Thank you for that. Now open up for public comment. Hearing seen, none, declare the hearing closed. Item four is a resolution approving and adopting the plans for the Campus Street Box Culvert Project. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item five is a public hearing on a proposed vacation and dedication of utility easements on lots 33 and 34 of Pinnacle Prairie Business Center North. Is there a motion to receive and file the proof of publication?
So moved.
Motion second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Any written objections filed with the city clerk?
I have no written objections. I'm filed, Mr. Mayor.
Before oral comments, I believe David Sturridge will talk about this briefly.
Thank you, Mayor and council. I have a map on the screen here that describes this next project. This is a utility easement vacation that's up and platted between lots 33 and 34 of the Pinnacle Prairie Business Center North. That's identified there in blue. So the idea is to vacate that existing 10-foot easement. It's five feet on each side of that lot line. And then dedicate a new easement, which is identified in red there, on the new lot line that's going to be sold to Quickstar there on the east half. And then Fairway was sold to, the west half was sold to Fairway. So we're going to vacate the existing and dedicate a new 10-foot identified there in red.
Very good. Thank you. Now I'll open up for any public comment. Hearing seen, none, declare the hearing closed. Item six is a resolution approving and authorizing vacation and dedication of utility easements of Pinnacle Prairie Business Center North. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item F is old business. F1 is pass ordinance 2921 amending chapter seven relative to the adoption by reference of the 2017 National Electrical Code and certain amendments thereto. This is upon its third and final consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item F is old business. F1 is pass ordinance 2921 amending chapter seven relative to the adoption by reference of the 2017 National Electrical Code and certain amendments thereto. This is upon its third and final consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item two is pass ordinance 2922 amending chapter 29 relative to the removal of terminology to be in conformance with the Code of Iowa upon its second consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item two is pass ordinance 2922 amending chapter 29 relative to the removal of terminology to be in conformance with the Code of Iowa upon its second consideration. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion? Mr. Cruz.
I'd like to clarify, on the definition of a rooming house, it states, "An owner occupied or manager occupied single dwelling unit wherein individual sleeping rooms are provided to not less than three unrelated resident tenants." So is a three-bedroom or a four-bedroom apartment considered a rooming house?
Can staff, any of you from staff answer that?
Looking for the definition. We did not make any changes to the definition of rooming house, so the apartment building that might have different units in it will be considered as an apartment building. I don't know if that answers the question or not, but we didn't make any changes to that definition.
Well, if you've got a three-bedroom, single-family home, or a four-bedroom, single-family home, is that considered a rooming house?
No.
Any further questions for staff? Requires roll call vote, please.
Five voting aye, two voting nay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item G is new business. G1 is the consent calendar. The following items will be acted upon by a voice vote with a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests an item B specifically considered separately. Is there any such request from council this evening? From the public? That is resolution calendar, I believe you're on at this point. That's okay. Anything further in the consent? I'll now summarize the consent calendar. Item 1A is approve the following recommendation of the mayor relative to the appointment of members to boards and commissions. This includes Dan Berrgard, Kim Krantz, and Brian Bowman. As always, thank you for your service to the city. Item B is receive and file communications to Civil Service Commission for the position of Building Inspector. C is receive and file the biannual report of Community Main Street relative to SMID funds and an economic development grant. D is receive and file the plans for the Center Street Recreation Trail Project. E is approving sign-related requests. F is approving a request for street closure. And G is approve permits and license. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Item two is a resolution calendar. These items will be acted upon by a roll call vote on a single motion without separate discussion unless someone from the council or the public requests an item to be pulled separately for such discussion. I am going to personally pull item G. Anything further from council?
K.
K?
Can you repeat that?
K?
Thank you.
And from before?
Yes. M-N-O-P.
Very good. Anyone further? Anyone else? I'll now summarize the resolution calendar minus item G. K-M-N-O.
P.
M-N-O-P.
Yes.
Resolution calendar, item A is resolution approving and adopting amendments to administrative policy number seven. B is approving and authorizing execution of an engagement agreement relative to bond sales. C is approving and authorizing execution of amendment number one to memorandum of understanding with the DOT. D is approving and authorizing execution of an easement agreement on State Street. E is a resolution approving and authorizing an agreement for concessions at Birdsong Park. F is approving and authorizing execution of a service agreement relative to drawdowns of CDBG funds. H is a resolution waiving building and zoning permit fees for temporary residential handicap ramps constructed by the Black Hawk County Commission of Veterans Affairs. I is approving and authorizing execution of a standard form of agreement for architectural services. J is approving and authorizing execution of six agreements for professional services relative to use of CDBG funds. L is a resolution approving and authorizing the execution of informal project contract for demolition in conjunction with the nuisance abatement. Moving down through Q is, QR and ST are setting May 5th as date of public hearings for the cost of the Center Street Recreation Trail, and items R, S, and T are proposed agreements for private development. Is there a motion to approve the resolution calendar minus G, K, M through P?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item G reads, "A resolution approving and authorizing execution of a memorandum of understanding with the Iowa Northeast Regional Council of Governments relative to updating the 1973 area-wide sanitary sewer study with a regionalization of wastewater feasibility study. Is there a motion, please?"
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. I will open up discussion with council or the public. I wanted to let council and the public know, before the meeting, I was made aware, in the spirit of their mission and the communities cooperating, the Black Hawk County Gaming Board, Gaming Association has generously agreed to pay $30,000 of each of the city's share for the cost for the study. So a nice shout-out to the Black Hawk County Gaming Association. It's been motion second. Any further discussion from council? Requires roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item K is a resolution approving an amendment to the Green Hill Village Master Plan relative to construction of townhomes in the vicinity of Green Hill Road and Hudson Road. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. For discussion from council or questions? Mr. Burr?
Yeah, I had a question. It appeared that there may have been four homes that were just to the south of where this is proposed, that I wanted to know, have they been built on and under the guides of the R1 or R2? What I want to know is, did they build their homes and now this zoning, or not zoning, it's not a zoning change, but change in the plan for the mixed-use district occurring after they already built their homes?
Do we have any?
It looks like there'd be only four homes involved.
There are homes just immediately to the south of the area where this plan change is being proposed, and I believe all of those lots have been built on at this time.
And were they notified or have any issue or complaint with us?
We sent notices to neighbors within 300 feet letting them know, and nobody attended the planning and zoning commission meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Anything further from council? From the public? Hearing seen, none. This requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item M reads, "A resolution setting May 7th as a date of public hearing on amendments to the city's FY18 budget." Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any further discussions from council? From the public? And please do keep in mind, what is in front of council right now is the agreement of moving this topic to a public hearing May 7th, where on May 7th there would be more information and public comment available towards the FY18 budget amendment. Name and address, please.
Yeah, I realize that this next four items are to be had a public hearing on May 7th, but I think that those hearings are going to be extremely important because if I, my math is okay, you have nearly $7 million worth of bonds that are going to be talked about and probably approved. And the reason that I'm concerned is that I may have missed it, but I never have found out where the extra $20 million was, came from in order to complete the University Avenue construction.
Mr. Skene, I've got to call you out of order, sir. This has nothing to do with that topic. And again, this is specifically for the public, setting the public hearing. And you're right, it is very important, and that's why it'll be before council in two weeks in order for the public to comment.
You know, I know that you think you're right, but you're not.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor.
There is a point of order. Mr. Skene, I'm going to have you sit down. You are out of order in relation to what's germane to this specific topic.
Yes, it is.
In two weeks, we will have ample opportunity for the public to comment.
But, Mr.
In the meantime, you can also call staff anytime, email any of us, and have any of those answers, questions answered that you just brought up. I'm going to have you sit down, sir. Thank you. Anyone further on items M, N, O? Well, I just made a motion for item M.
So moved.
Second.
It has been motion second. Any further discussion from council? Sorry about that. Or the public? Requires a roll call vote for item M, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Items N, O, and P are against setting limits for those bonds. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussions from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Items N, O, and P are against setting limits for those bonds. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussions from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Items N, O, and P are against setting limits for those bonds. Is there a motion, please?
So moved.
Motion second. Any further discussions from council? Requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item H, is there a motion to allow bills and payroll?
So moved.
Motion second. This requires a roll call vote, please. This requires a roll call vote, please.
I'm voting aye, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Item I is city council referrals. Does council have any items for referral this evening? Hearing and seeing none, move to item J. Is there any city council updates this evening?
Mr. Mayor, I have an update.
Sure, Mr. Green.
On Saturday, I had the privilege of attending the Waterloo Neighborhood Leadership Mini Summit. I was thankful for the invitation to that. It was put on by Waterloo Neighborhood Services. And as an interloper, I found it was really useful to attend that 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM summit. I was very impressed by the organization and the enthusiasm of the members there, both their city staff and the neighborhood leadership. I look forward to encouraging the kind of development of neighborhood associations here in Cedar Falls, and hopefully to have a similar annual summit here for our neighborhood leadership. We do a presentation every October, which is an opportunity for council or for a neighborhood association to see what projects they're working on, but this kind of event where they're having a much, a longer discussion, where it's a roundtable, I saw huge value in that. So it's a very terrific and informative day, and I was very encouraged by that.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Anyone further from council? I would like to have staff update the council on the approved requirements for Quick Star. I know staff did some work on that the last previous week or so, and it was emailed and maybe passed around to a few others, but as far as updates concerned, Mr. Search, if you have a few items there.
Thank you, yes. Staff developed a list that was discussed at the last council meeting for that Quick Star site plan review, and that was sent to Administrator, Mr. Gaines, and then Quick Star followed with their revised letter that basically can, you know, agrees to all those stipulations that were addressed at our last council meeting.
Very good, thank you. Item K is a public forum. Speakers have one opportunity to speak for up to five minutes on topics germane to city business. Is there anyone here from the public that would like to speak this evening? Mr. Skane? I'll have you raise your hand again. Mr. Skane, you can come up, please.
At the last city council meeting, I spoke about University Avenue as a broken corridor. I said that Cedar Falls had a corridor that connected it to Waterloo. That corridor became US 18. It was renamed University Avenue in 1970 and was expanded to six lanes. Later, the traffic lights were optimized, and traffic could move through the Cedar Falls part of University Avenue at a speed of 45 miles per hour, and it took only 2 minutes and 30 seconds to do so. It was an effective corridor, and 20,000 vehicles used it daily. Over the years, the road surface on University Avenue deteriorated, and in 19, excuse me, in 2014, the state of Iowa entered into an agreement with the city of Cedar Falls to provide 20 million to reconstruct the university. Data shows that it could have been reconstructed for 20 million if the existing six-lane concept had been used. In February 2015, the city council accepted the fourth engineering bid to reconstruct University Avenue. University Avenue would be reduced to four lanes and have six roundabouts. Instead of 20 million, the initial cost of the fourth bid was 32.5 million, and as construction has progressed, the cost has increased to 40 million. This year, when the reconstruction is finished, university will be a corridor no longer. It will take five minutes to go from Main Street to Midway. The roundabouts have a posted speed of 15 miles per hour, and 35 miles between the roundabouts. Instead of 20,000 vehicles a day, and I drive it every day, the traffic has slowed to a trickle. In some places between Holiday and Waterloo Road, there's very little traffic. In yesterday's Waterloo Courier, Laura Atkinson had a letter to the editor. She wrote, "I recently drove from Waterloo City Line to the University of Northern Iowa down the newly reconstructed University Avenue. It was a harrowing experience. I've been to Rome, to Boston, and to Cape Cod, and traffic flows well through those rotaries, AKA roundabouts, yet they are a disaster here. The lanes are too narrow, and the circumference is not adequate. At least one semi-trailer has tipped over, and I hear police are not even recording the number of fender benders. A terrified fellow with Indiana plates stopped dead in front of me. Half the drivers don't yield when they should. I originally supported the roundabout idea, but changed my tune when the construction started. How many millions has Cedar Falls spent on this disastrous enterprise? Two relatives from New England, both city planners, visited me recently. They were appalled. Any city would sanction such a travesty."
One minute, Mr. Skane.
What do we all do now, except tear everything up and start over? In her letter, Laura Atkinson says it all.
Thank you, sir. Others for public comment? Larry, go ahead, sir. It's fine.
Mr. Mayor, Councilman Sue. Larry Wykoff, 4241 East Park Road. Nice to see you again tonight. All the Cedar Falls council guests voted to install the generic QuickTrip gas station in the Green Hill area in spite of strong legitimate arguments against it by a large contingent of taxpaying citizens. The East Park Road councilman went on and on about how all the process Ts were crossed and Is dotted, but failed to mention that the taxpayers of Cedar Falls are tired of not hearing our majority voices concerning roundabouts. My 1,500 signatures to North Cedar's 800. Why are we spending 37 million on the intersection of Viking Road and Highway 58 when it was first suggested to take the speed limit down to 45 and have multiple police cars out there to enforce it? Oh, wait, that would save millions in construction costs, which is not an acceptable alternative to city fathers. So on 2 April, in spite of the rational arguments to stop this out-of-state business, Fairway, once built, will be right next door to a generic gas station, be providing the same bread and milk. Gas spills will damage our drainage and creek systems. 10-foot trees versus 8-foot will not stop noise and unsightliness of generic gas stations and a potential crime wave that attracts bad people to these stores. Also, with a grocery store and police station going into the same neighborhood, isn't this going to stress the street traffic? I was proud to be one of the 400 signatures to show support for the anti-genetic store, but just like the University Avenue project, it wouldn't matter if we had collected 39,000 signatures, Sean Fredrickson, as all the yes-men were going to vote yes, and to heck with the common sense citizen concerns. Thanks to the three council folks for siding with us, taxpayers that pay your salaries, us. This project was a clear desire by headquarters for business at any price over the wishes of us citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wykoff. I forgot the previous speaker, but anyone wish to speak or ask questions from council? Previous speaker?
I could just clarify on the comment about how it would have been 20 million to put it back the way it was. The DOT funding is for what they consider eligible portions of the project. There are other elements of the project that would have needed to be done, underground utilities, lighting replacement, that type of thing, that would be non-eligible expenses and would have been additional expenses the city would have had to incur for the project.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Mr. Mayor, if I might. I don't recall any accident where we had a semi-tip over. I also have done a six-month traffic study, or accident study, six months before the construction began, which was a couple of years ago, and six months after the corridor was opened between the Waterloo Road and the Highway 58 region, you only completed study. Accidents were fewer, and there were also no personal injury accidents in that area. The comment that we're not investigating minor accidents is not true. We investigate all accidents that were called to.
Thank you, Director Olson. Next in public speaking, please.
Mr. Mayor and council, I'm Ronald Florrie, MD retired, 301 Spruce Hill Drive, Cedar I actually do like the roundabouts in university, so I'm not speaking against that, but my wife, Denise, and I do oppose the Quick Star as it was proposed. I don't feel that the noise and light remedies have been sufficiently addressed. My house is directly north across the street. If the city is going to allow Quick Star in the proposed site, at least extend the berm that starts on Main and extend it further east and perhaps put trees on top of that to help mitigate the sound and the light. Also, do not allow it to be a 24-hour business. It's a residential area, and the city has the right and duty to listen and protect its citizens. Have the Quick Star closed by 10:00 PM and not open until 6:00 AM. Just because it may be legal to keep open 24 hours does not make it right for the neighbors. Reduce the number of pumps to the usual number seen in the residential multiple-use areas as one of the councilmen, I don't know if I permitted to say my name, but
Please don't.
...had outlined in the last meeting. Protect the city of Cedar Falls as a desirable place to live. Do not destroy its neighborhoods. I don't mind driving two miles to Quick Star on 58 and Ridgeway. I was there earlier today, gas, car wash, and bananas. Usually I get maple glaze Persians, but too many desserts at home.
Thank you, Doctor. Does council have any questions to staff? Previous speaker. Rosemary, please.
Good evening, council.
Microphone, please.
I don't understand back there. You know, I can't hear anybody down there. Is that good?
I think so.
Okay.
Thanks.
I may be yelling before I'm done, so. In any event, our citizens are our business. Now, after the vote, and I know this is aftermath, but we didn't have any chance after the vote came in. It was a done deal. You voted. We said we're going to have a gas station. And so I just have some comments about that, but first of all, I want to say, I don't know exactly what the timeline is, but in a year, in my neighborhood and their neighborhood, you have put a large building for the city, which we had no say about. You have put in a grocery store, which we accepted. From my point of view, it was the better of evils. We still had a lot of traffic. We have all of that to contend with. And you put in a gas station. Now, that whole end of that neighborhood and all the people across the road are contending with three huge additions to our neighborhood in less than a year. Okay, my understanding from a lot of people is some other strange stuff, which is, when I listen to the reasons for why you accepted a gas station, some of it, I'm just going to not, I know you don't want me to talk about people, but one of the, one of the thought processes was that the councilperson was content with their idea of what they wanted to do because after they decided, all the, all, everything on south of Green Hill was business, and everything north was housing. And I think that's what they said, basically. Well, we have 1,000 people on the other side of Green Hill Road. I call that a neighborhood. So that took that over. That was one of the things that was stated. The, one of, I didn't hear three of the people talk very clearly, so I'm not even going to worry about that. But then one of the other things was, I know there was discussion about, according to the newspaper, the, we're going to return to the vote because one councilperson was not happy with how they had thought they wanted to vote in the first place. So that person was going to renounce what he had voted, and we're going to have another vote. But he was going to ask the gas station for whatever else they would give us, one more chance to give us a little help. And I, all I could make out of that was we got two more foot on our trees, and I don't know that that was the answer for, you know, voting the other direction, but that's what I heard. As I said, I couldn't underhear, I could not understand many of what came up. I thought that the thought process of the different sizes of gas stations, which came late to the game, might have proved something, but it was too late by that time. So, that's my, that's what I heard that night. And to add on to that, I have, the ex parte statement, I think, threw us all out of kilter. As far as I'm concerned, I did not understand it. I've asked numerous people, and it kind of comes out differently each time. And it seems to be a court case that went against the council, and so they had to do something with it. So, I find that that is not reason enough not to be able to talk to my council people, all of you. I've always been able to do that. So I'm sorry that that is going to change for the people who are your citizens of Cedar Falls. Also, somebody in the council mentioned that the gas station people were our citizens. Well, I don't think so. So, the ordinance has not been done since 2011, is my understanding, and I'm asking for, I don't know, the council asks P&amp;Z or P&amp;ZX, the council, to revamp, go through, and look at what they're doing. There is a difference between a gas station and a church, and I think we need to look at what those differences are. So, we have what we have, and I'm not happy with it, and I don't think any of us in that neighborhood are, but we will probably take what we get, but I don't think you did very well by us. Now, I want to change the subject completely because I want to say, if I may, that I'd like to recognize Pat Kenny, who has left us as our person of interest for years, writing for the Courier. I think he has been well-received. I think he has been even-handed, and I'll miss him. So, thank you.
Thank you, Rosemary. Appreciate those words with Pat, too. Anyone further for public comment? Yes, please. Jill.
Mr. Mayor, in appreciation for representing the residents in opposition of the Quick Star convenience store at Coneflower Parkway and Green Hill Road, I yield the floor and my minutes to Penny Pop.
Not allowed, Ms. Fisher. I appreciate that. You'll have five minutes. Each speaker has the five minutes, but thank you.
I cannot yield the floor?
No, ma'am.
That's not, according to Robert's rules, it is allowable.
No, ma'am. According to council rules, it's not, it's the, I don't know, as far as I know, it's never been done before.
Just because it hasn't been done before, does it mean that it's not allowed?
Yes, no, it's not going to be allowed. Yes, no, it's not going to be allowed this evening or foreseeable future to yield minutes. But you'd have five minutes, and anyone else can have their five minutes, too.
Okay. I would like to also suggest that there be some type of consideration for the lights, the traffic lights, on South Main and Green Hill. I have noticed that on the newly opened extension of Green Hill, they did change that so that you alternate the east-south so that you can continue to go with flow of traffic on Hudson. I would suggest they consider doing the north-south as an alternate and leave Green Hill as together. So, I think that would help the residents, and it would also possibly help for not having any traffic situations that I anticipate we're going to have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I will reach out quickly.
Can I comment on that? So, we are, we do have a proposal out right now to do a study of Green Hill Road, and part of that study is to take a near-term look, short-term look, at Green Hill and Main as far as what improvements could be done immediately while we wait for design in 2020 and construction in 2021. So that will be looked at as a potential option to make a near-term improvement once that study begins, and we're hoping to have answers once we select a consultant for that sort of thing in the June timeframe.
So is it typically, they'll do the RFP for this study? Can we request in the RFP that they look at those traffic lights first, and if there's a potential solution?
Yes, and we have.
Move on that before the entire RFP is, or the project is done?
Yes, that's correct, and we have asked for that. Yep.
Very good. Anyone else? I know I have one.
Good evening. My name is Penny Pop. I live at 4805 South Main Street. I have a wee bit to say tonight, and I would hope someone on council will intervene on my behalf if I go over my allotted time. I'm speaking as a private citizen, and these are my views alone. I'd like to reflect on the events that unfolded in relation to the Quick Star project. At the very first P&amp;Z meeting where this project was introduced, interest was high, even though the majority of the property owners received notice the day of the meeting. The residents were told they should come prepared with the facts and valid arguments to present to P&amp;Z. Emotions should be checked at the door. That was the condition placed on the residents, not ex parte. I have talked to countless people over the past few months, answering questions about this project. Most of all, I listened to the frustration. It was interesting to me that many people watched the proceedings on television. Many times, they would share that they didn't understand what was going on and needed clarification. That prompted me early on to come to every council meeting to see for myself. Another interesting observation made was the reluctance of people who needed to get involved in support or in opposition. I heard many reasons. I don't have the time. I can't make a difference. I don't like to speak in public. I don't want to be on TV. I am intimidated by the city. I'm intimidated by the process. I have business with the city. The city might retaliate against me if I speak up. The fix is in. Are these statements valid? I'll leave that up to you. I continue to encourage the residents to get involved in a way that they would be comfortable. Throughout the process, over the next few months, the residents did just that, whether it was a petition, signature, phone call, background information, questions to be asked, or concerns about the project. We respected the requests made in these chambers, and because of that respect for this chamber and the business that is conducted here, we remained professional, including thanking the mayor and council at the end of the process. And speaking of the process, I did notice one fatal flaw. As council discussed the finer points of this project on April 2nd, questions were asked for changes or recommendations, and no mention of the very detailed concessions that Quick Star was offering. They also offered additional changes, but only upon council recommendation. No one on council asked for a summary before the vote. The mayor did not offer either. I didn't even know what you voted to approve. I'm sure council at large did when he was suggesting a smaller fueling station to fit into the character of the neighborhood. The Quick Star representative ignored his request. I doubt that any of you on that night could list what was approved, hence the email that I sent to the mayor and council immediately after the meeting. These items were what the residents were interested in. These were the issues of the utmost importance to over 400 residents. I appreciated your comments in regards to your personal views on this matter, but many comments did not specifically address the issues. I debated on interrupting the mayor and council before the vote, but I knew from experience that the mayor would disregard my request to speak again. I had no remedy in the meeting under the specific rules laid out for that evening. So why were the changes never clarified? Maybe it was the inexperience by the mayor, council, attending staff, and administration. The simple act of a quick summary before a vote on a site plan would fix the problem. I did submit a request to the mayor to include an item on this week's agenda to publicly clarify what was approved on the project, but this was rejected and labeled as not being appropriate. This request was informational for the general public, and I feel that was very appropriate.
Ms. Pop?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
If I can, I won't count against your time, but I did indeed email you today of that approval. It's ready on screen if you're ready to speak on it.
That's not what I'm referring to, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, having on the agenda, correct. Okay, thank you. Continue.
You're welcome. I can only guess that the city did not want to open this up for public participation. Then it would have been revealed that the reconsideration vote only occurred to clarify the height of the trees and no overnight parking. The other concessions offered by Quick Star were not included and left on the table because it was never brought up by council. Now, this is the list of the 12 items that was approved, that evening. Number one, signage only on the west and east side of the canopy with no lighted stripe on the northerly face. On February 19th, the language was, install non-lighted signage and banding on gas canopy. Well, I think we lost a wee bit on this one. The second one, install dimmable under-canopy lights and signage lights on the gasoline canopy. On February 19th...
Sorry, Ms. Pop, you have five minutes is up.
May I offer her five more minutes of time?
If you don't mind, there is a motion to allow five more minutes?
I'd like to hear what she has to say. I think it's valid.
Motion second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion carries. Five more minutes, Ms. Pop.
Thank you.
You bet.
Number two, on February 19th, the language was, install non-lighted signage and banding on gas canopy, and again, we lost a wee bit here. Number three, install 10-foot conifers along the north side of the pavement. Quick Star did agree to install 10-foot conifers. We gained two feet here. Number four, all site landscape plantings will be installed to grow and mature on site. Well, when I plant a tree, I expect it to grow and mature, and I'm glad the city agrees. Standard language, no change. Number five, Quick Star, oh, I missed something there. I will add that Quick Star is planting on white pines for these landscape plantings, and the city might want to investigate the Zimmerman pine moth infestation that is incurring in Iowa. Number five, Quick Star will work with the city to add additional trees in the right-of-way behind the relocated recreational trail on the south side of Green Hill Road. We gained more trees on the greenbelt. Number six, the hours of operation for the car wash will be from 7:00 A.M. to 10:00 P.M. Hours have changed from 6:00 A.M. to 10:00 P.M. to conform with our noise ordinance. Number seven, no music will be played on overhead speakers. Well, according to the Quick Star representative, there are no overhead speakers. This point makes no sense. Number eight, all pump announcements will be made at each individual gas pump. No overhead speakers will be used for these announcements. Again, according to Quick Star, no overhead speakers will be used at this location. This point makes no sense. Number nine is the gas TV monitors that'll be installed at each pump, and the sound will be placed on a low setting, and should the sound become a problem, it'll be turned off between the hours of 10:00 P.M. and 7:00 A.M. The city did add the sound restriction to conform to our noise ordinance. Number 10, the overnight truck parking is allowed. Adequate signage will be installed. Now, this item was added, but it just refers to truck parking, not all vehicles. Number 11, all site plan elements and site plan conditions will be installed. This is standard language, no change. And number 12, Quick Star will conform to the technical comments in the staff report. This, again, is standard language, no change. The reconsideration vote established the height of trees, no overnight parking, and that Quick Star will conform to our city code. This is what is important to our city council, not documentation on noise analysis, pre-construction soil and water samples, environmental issues, or residents' concerns. Well, when I plant a tree, I expect it to grow. I didn't need to reconsider that, but I'm glad that's cleared up. But who am I to tell you what to do? I am but a resident in this place you call, or I call, home. You know what is best for the city, or so you say. I'm not considered an expert in anything by the city, but this experience has definitely enlightened me. I had hoped the residents and their elected officials were on the same page, but from the actions and results shown for the process and at the April 2nd meeting, I now know we are not. Now, if you'd like more information, please contact our city administrator for a copy of what you had seen up on the screen. I also want to thank Representative Walt Rogers and Senator Jeff Danielson for their support and guidance when it was not found in our own city council. Senator Danielson has filed a request for opinion by the Attorney General of the State of Iowa in relation to the use of ex parte communicational guidelines by the city of Cedar Falls. While this process has not been the most pleasant for any of us, I hope that we can get a fresh start by working together on solutions for the next project, the Green Hill and Main intersection. And with your recent approval of Quick Star, this issue has become more urgent than ever. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Pop. Appreciate it. Anyone further for public comment? Hearing and seeing none, any questions to staff via council?
One question. Has there been any consideration to ask Quick Star to have less than 10 pumps with 20 hoses and get to be more of a neighborly gas station, as was described in that overhead from April 2nd?
I'm going to assume Quick Star, to their response was what staff heard in the meeting. I would say, no, there probably has not been consideration for that.
Has there been a direct question that, would they consider that?
We can pose the question, but we have not, as of right now.
Do we have any right to limit the hours of operation?
Well, again, I believe council has any right in terms of voting.
No, I meant legally, do we have any right to do that?
Legal is their prerogative there?
I don't believe so, as long as it complies with our ordinances on hours of operation. Very little discretion to limit that.
Mr. Derris?
I'm just curious, if Quick Star does not adhere to those 12, any of those 12 items, what happens? Does it get fined, or does the project end, or?
First of all, they have to apply for a building permit once they actually get their building plan submitted to the building official. Once the building permits approved, all of those things on the site plan and those items that were outlined all need to be completed prior to them to getting an occupancy permit. And through code enforcement, we can continually monitor their site to make sure that, you know, if they plant 10 trees and five of them die, that all of those are all kept up, so.
They'll be responsible for replacing them.
That's correct.
And the other thing that was of major concern to everybody last time was the runoff. And could we talk to someone to explain a little bit more about, number one, what the city does in all parking lots like this? And then it sounded like Quick Star had an additional process. And is there, can anybody talk about that a little bit to provide some assurance that probably compared to other places in the community, there's as much being done there as anywhere?
Sure.
I've heard that perhaps runoff from Fairway might be more significant than from a gas station because of Quick Star's, they've got their own filtration system, or whatever.
Sure, I can speak to that to some degree. So, Quick Star has an intake structure at the corner of their parking lot where the water drains to, it has an oil and water separator. So, as was mentioned, petroleum products float on the surface. So, there's a hood that goes down that, as the water level comes up, with the petroleum products being on the surface, they can't get underneath that hood and out the structure unless there is a large rainfall event, and in that case, there would be an overflow. Now, what's a large rainfall event? I guess I can't speak to that immediately, but it's, I mean, our detention pond is designed for a 10-year event. Trying to put that in more simple terms, if you were to, if we had a flat area that encompassed the entire Quick Star site, and we put a wall around it and sealed it so no water could leak out, and we had a 10-year rain event, with the detention pond, you know, keep in mind that detention pond is designed to release water at a two-year rate. So there's water coming into that, and there's water going out. So, with water going in and out, there would be 1.25 inches of rainfall covering that entire site. Now, if you plug the basin and you didn't allow any water to go out, our calculations show that would be about 6.6 inches of rainfall over the entire site. So it's quite a large event, but we have events that are larger. We certainly do. So, but we're following guidelines that are established both through our state and federal government, as well as our city ordinances. So water would be, an attempt would be made to filter the water in that initial structure. It would be released into the detention pond on site. That detention pond is lined with, it's got a clay liner that keeps water from leaving that pond, other than out the other structure. So the other structure is the same as the one in the parking lot in that it is a oil-water separator that has a hood on it that prevents that surface pollution from exiting. And then the, they're allowed on site to clean those structures out periodically. And you're going to find all kinds of debris in there as well, garbage cans, paper, whatever finds its way into those. So then, then it leaves and goes to a regional detention pond that will store the water as size to store the 100-year event. So, is it a system that you can say will not have any pollutants whatsoever in? I think the answer is no, but I think that's the same answer for any system in the city. We're unable to design something that would...
Do most gas stations have the initial filtration?
It's not something that we require. I believe it's something that the state and the federal government require on gas station sites. I would have to confirm that for sure, but it's not, that part is not a city requirement. It is, I believe, a state and/or federal requirement.
Thanks, John.
Mr. Whelan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A while ago, I became aware that the city was looking at the possibility of putting trees and shrubs along city-owned property on Green Hill to help those homes that are most affected by Quick Star with sight and sound. Is the city still looking at that?
I believe so. Do we have some confirmation there, Mark?
Mr. Whelan, yes, we have contacted a local landscape company, and they have been provided with CAD drawings, aerial photos, lot lines for the individuals north of the Quick Star area, and we're hoping to get something back for the council to look at within the next four to eight weeks.
Where are they looking at putting these? On north-south side of Green Hill, by the road, or further in?
Right now, we'll probably be looking at the north side of Green Hill Road, north of the recreation trail, and then down towards the private property lines.
Now, there are two ash trees that are in that area. Are they going to be coming down this year?
I'm not necessarily sure they'd be this year, but we're continuing to work to the south with our ash tree removals as we work through the community.
Thank you.
Anything further from council?
Mr. Mayor, do we have a proposed timetable from Quick Star for construction this time?
Mr. Gaines, was it maybe next year because of a project in Waterloo that?
Yeah, I think initially, they said that... Yeah, I think initially, they said that, first of all, their timetable's a little bit open, but what they said right now tentative schedule is not till probably a year from now will they begin construction.
Anything further from council? Is there a motion to adjourn, please?
So moved.
Motion second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, nay. We are adjourned. Thank you.